I can hear you better, but.
Still not good.
Online Patty.
Need to call meeting to order?
Is it gonna work Patty?
No, I can't hear.
I might as well go, because I can't hear a thing for me.
The members still can't hear you enough to listen.
I think they can, but I can't.
The chairwoman cannot hear you.
There's no way to turn this up?
No. It's actually coming from that silver box there.
Oh, I thought it was coming from the TV. Is the sound coming from the TV or from the box?
Is the sound coming from the TV or the box? We can't hear you. Oh yeah, we can't hear you.
What's he saying?
From the box. So maybe.
Disconnect that box.
Okay, Amy put that on the table.
Can we not call you and you talk on a phone? On a speaker phone? You might have to call Amy, because mine's about dead, again.
Move it on up here. Set it on the table.
That's what we were gonna try to do.
Yeah, the power cord is too short. Maybe, okay.
Larry, do you wanna try and call my phone? You call my phone, we'll put it on speaker. Okay.
You'll have to mute him up here.
Can we mute the, uh, down there? Can we mute our nose?
Can you guys hear him on the phone, though?
It's echoing off the tube.
Yeah, I started saying it's echoing here.
Okay, okay. Does he need to see us? Do you need to see us Larry?
Uh, preferably, if I don't want to, you know, you can use the camera.
Let me just mute him.
With all these technical difficulties.
Okay, we got it.
Yep, uh, I lost you. Did I get it on site from the computer?
Yeah, just a second. It's back in.
It's back in.
We'll just have to use that mouse to answer.
Alright, there you go. I see you guys.
Okay.
Alright, my apologies on all the issues with technology.
Can you hear him Patty? Okay.
Started off with the meeting yet, you know, roll call and stuff.
You haven't done that yet.
Yeah, I gotta call, I gotta call the meeting to order and everything first. We're a little late.
Okay, we are a little late, so I'll call your meeting to order.
Yes ma'am.
Did you, you're here.
I'm sorry.
Did you say my name?
No, not yet. Patty?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Marla? Joan?
Yeah.
And Kenneth.
Okay, we have four. Item two, consideration and discussion regarding update on Perkins' progress plan navigating growth 2045. Okay Larry.
See how I can see where Matt is for him or that is.
It's something on.
How'd you do that?
What'd you do? I can hear you now.
Well, do you think I went to...
Uh, what'd you do?
I went, changed the speaker to the T, to the TV here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, perfect.
I think we can hear you now Larry.
So can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Now you gotta mute yourself.
Alright.
There we go.
Alright, here we go.
Alright, can you hear us?
Yeah, uh, we're good, so.
Okay, good.
Alright. Alright, so, uh, so the update, uh... Yeah, the agenda overview of the update on Perkins' plan, uh, is to, on, uh... So, so far, uh, the completion of project orientation phase and the community engagement and visiting phase. So, the next, we're talking about, we're going to the online survey, uh, the stakeholder interview process, public workshop, uh, and then the drive community vision statement. Um, that's kind of the progress of, you know, that's not much to talk about and put it on the agenda, but that's kind of where we are. So if you guys wanna go on to the next item, we can.
Do we have to change slides?
No, I think he changes them.
Oh, I thought he.
Do you change the slides?
Yes.
Yeah, I will.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, so, uh, next on the agenda is the stakeholder contact information. And so, uh, I've gotten really good contact information from, uh, Bob and a few others, but if you have any individuals that you think we should be reaching out to as far as stakeholder, uh, contact, that would be fantastic. So, these are individuals that are kind of like movers and shakers of the community, so, uh, you know, these are like ministers, business owners, uh, real estate agents, developers, um, people who are usually more in a leadership role or have an area of expertise that they generally work in. If we're, uh, kind of looking at this from the standpoint of, uh, the tribe, the school, any of those individuals will be needs or a story jobs to. And so, the stakeholders would be communicated through an interview process into blocks. So let's say if we had, uh, twenty individuals that we were gonna be communicating to, we would bring them into sessions that are basically gonna be five, 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 and five, five individuals, so that way they feel comfortable, uh, communicating and provide their thoughts and their feedback on, uh, issues going on with the city, things that the city needs to be looking at the next twenty years. So, it's, it's kind of gonna be a process like that. Thoughts, it'd be a lot of good contact, and I know it provides some additional ones. Uh, but if you folks can think about those, uh, individ, over the next week or so and provide Bob with that update or just email me directly, I can add them to the list of people that we need, we need to reach out to. And never think that you're gonna be overthinking it much or providing too many individuals, because oftentimes is that we'll get a good list of like forty or fifty people and sometimes we'll only be able to get a response back of twenty or so. So, Mary, or, is, is always my thought and opinion on that. Uh, does anybody have any questions in regards to a stakeholder?
No.
No.
No, don't believe so.
Okay. Alright, so, next one is going to be the survey questions. Um, I think they, half in the packet you were provided were the questions that we were looking at, uh, providing. So I'm gonna switch over to that real. There we go. Alright, did you guys see those questions?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the survey that was, uh, that we will send out to, like, that asks general questions, uh, that we're sections about, uh, about them, so that way we can get statistical information about, uh, how many years they lived in Perkins, if they worked in Perkins, their age, um, and some demographic information. Um, and then it'll go into more of the community participation vision portion, ask about things like house, that lives are either in Perkins, with Perkins, uh, what are characteristics about Perkins that are leading to the community, um, which of the following best describes what you most pride in Perkins, and so on and so forth. Uh, and then after that would be about housing and neighborhood thoughts. Uh, how important is for the state of Perkins to address, uh, the following housing issues? In, uh, quality of housing, different housing types, neighborhood appearance, what types feature housing development would you plus like, would you like to see? And there are gonna be different types in here, single family townhomes, duplexes, uh, things along those lines. And I know that, uh, individuals in the community will be like, um, you know, why are you asking about mobile homes? Why are you asking about apartments? Um, because that doesn't fit what we currently have in Perkins, but it's, it's kind of just to get, get the feel of what people are thinking overall. The next one will be about transportation mobility. You know, do you feel that traffic congestion is an issue in Perkins? Or questions like, do you think Perkins adequate sidewalks to meet the needs of the community? Um, you know, uh, transportation, you know, asking the community needs, uh, does transit service, especially being so close to Stillwater, you know, having key connection between the communities, uh, if there are more, like, uh, doctor's office, medical offices, things like that that are up there. Um, that way our senior citizens have, uh, an easier way to connect versus them having to drive themselves. The next section will be about parks and recreation, you know, how satisfied are you with the quality of parks and recreation in Perkins? And then asking about things that they would like to see in the future, you know, more, uh, you know, baseball fields, football courts, AMX parks, um, and then also other amenities like swimming, community gardens, horse trails. I know some of these things may be out there, but it's always good to get a cross rap, a cross section of what your community feels is a good need for it. Um, and then, uh, the next section will be about city services and infrastructure. You know, how satisfied are you with the city of Perkins in each of the following areas of economic growth and encouraging citizen involvement, listening to citizens? This is the way that the community can get a tone of how people feel about the community and, uh, city services and see if there's any potential changes that would need to be added to the conference of plan to kind of solidify that. How important is for the city of Perkins to address the following issues, uh, you know, traffic flow, proximity to parks, code enforcement, property maintenance, public utilities, uh, recycling, flood protection? It's kind of a, it is a broad way for people to, but it also has those very important questions, uh, so that way we can get a good test of what the community needs to be doing forward. And then, you know, addressing what it feels most important, selecting the most important thing for them to, uh, to look at. And then, uh, the last one, open ended question, you know, open ended deep, is there anything else that you'd like the city of Perkins to know or consider? And so oftentimes is that, you know, surveys will try to cover as much as possible, but fortunately, it's not something that, um, we can, you know, there, there may be something very specific. Or this is also an opportunity for someone who, I was gonna say was event, about, uh, an item, but it, it at least gives them the form to do that. But that's, that's kind of how those surveys are currently set up. But are there additional questions or questions that you feel that shouldn't be addressed or anything?
Any other questions?
Oh, looks like you covered.
No questions.
Okay, good.
How will the survey be distributed?
Sorry?
How will the survey be distributed?
So, uh, that's a very good question, and so this is an online survey. Uh, it will be provided through our social media site, uh, so our website, Facebook, Instagram, and then it will also be, uh, there will be a, um, yeah, here, it's actually the next slide. There we go, and let me sure, back with you. There we go, okay. So, there'll be a press release and a meeting to order that will go out. That will be, um, you know, to the local newspapers, to, uh, news stations, things along those lines, talking about the conference of plan, uh, and, uh, that. And then, in addition to that, uh, there will be, um, videos that are, are generated, and I'll show you some of those here in a second, to, uh, encourage people, um, to do the, uh, survey whenever it launches. So there'll be some prep videos that is talking about the conference of plan, and I'll show you one of those videos here in a second. And then there'll be videos about, you know, hey, the survey's gonna be coming up, be sure to do it. And then there'll be videos about, you know, it's going, you know, get engaged, go do it. Um, and it, it's trying to get as much participation as possible, uh, through those, through those avenues. Any other thoughts on how we should do average for, to encourage people to do the survey?
I think you're gonna miss, um, a lot of the senior citizens. I think you're gonna miss a lot of older people, because they're, a lot of them are not on social media and they, you know.
They don't have computers or, you know, stuff like that.
Of course, they probably figure that I could be here in 2045. I go on, but.
You might also.
My thought about that is, um, if the library can provide an opportunity for citizens to utilize that and/or we can ultimately, based, um, uh, survey via the library.
Are you gonna get a lot of people responding that don't live in Perkins? That just click a box?
That will be providing that.
That's one of the questions.
Yeah, but you don't have to tell the truth.
Living Perkins or living Perkins, uh, if they just work in Perkins, things along those lines.
Bob, will you be, uh, putting an insert into the city's water bill, you know? Like, sometimes you'll write a letter in there? Uh, is that one way to notify?
Yeah, we can, we can put something in with the water bill, but I'm concerned about, there, there's people in the community that may not come to the library, may not be able to come to the library.
Right.
And aren't digitally wired in, and they're gonna be missed.
So in your newsletter that you send out, if they can't do any of those things, maybe you could give a phone number to, to call City Hall or something, and someone can take one to them?
Or have them, read it to them over the phone and let them answer the, that might be kind of complex or something.
I mean, it's gonna be time consuming.
You know, if it's.
We can certainly have them available at City Hall.
Yeah, we can have them available, but.
Can we put the survey in with the water bill?
It would be a separate mailing.
Yeah.
And it would, uh...
Very costly, right?
Yeah.
Could be, yeah.
Sixty cents a envelope.
Yeah.
Um, another way may be some of the churches, um, 'cause a lot of older people go to church, and maybe they could have, um, the churches, different churches that could be provided with that information to the people. You know, that they can, that there is gonna be, um, this opportunity.
Yeah, and so through the, um, the stakeholder, you know, if you could provide those contact informations, that would be great, so that way we can get the word out as much as possible.
What about the Senior Citizen Center?
Yes, the seniors, we have a Perkins Senior Citizen Center. That would be a.
Just take some surveys to them when they're having one of their meetings.
Yeah. Good idea.
That's a good one.
Okay. Alright, and so I'll show some of those papers. Perkins is growing, and with growth comes opportunity. Perkins' progress plan is our roadmap to a brighter future, focused on improving housing, infrastructure, transportation, and more. Together, we're building for today and planning for tomorrow. So that's one of those general videos talk, uh, about, you know, being able to know more about the plan and for them to read more about it. Perkins is growing, and with growth comes opportunity. Perkins' progress plan is our roadmap to a brighter future. Next slide? There we go. The future of Perkins is in your hands. Our online survey is a quick and easy way to share your ideas and priorities for our growing city. From housing to roads, and from local businesses to green spaces, we want to know there's most to you. Your feedback will help guide important decisions in the Perkins Progress Plan. So, the, uh, thing to talk about underneath this survey is that the plan is to launch this, um, on the thirtieth of January. And so, if those videos will have, uh, dates on it, you know, look for the, look for the survey on this date, and then a launch video will say it's available now, and there'll be links available underneath that for people to be able to fill out information, so. Um, yeah. Okay, that's, that's the, uh, are you folks okay with, uh, the goal of launching the online survey on the thirtieth?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Bob?
So, the next item on the agenda is the public workshop date. Um, because of the, uh, kind of, the delay of cutting this meeting, uh, we, we pushed it out a little bit, so we pushed it to February the twenty fourth, which is a Friday. Uh, our hope is that, um, not Friday. Sorry, February twenty first. Oops, sorry, should've said twenty first, that's a Friday. And so, uh, we're, we have the public workshop then. And what that is, is a opportunity for people to come in personally and provide their thoughts about different, uh, ideas of the things that are going on in the community, specifically talking about transportation, talking about housing, parks, roadways, all of those things. And so, um, there'll be a little bit of a, uh, talking session at the beginning, in the sense, you know, just explaining things, and then there'll be boards that will be put up around the room for people to go up and provide, uh, you know, they'll get little stickers that's, you know, and they'll be able to vote what they feel like is very important to them, or they'll get, um, uh, you know, that they can provide their thoughts on and, and then place it on board. So I suspect that we'll get a lot of, uh, individuals that generally may be doing the technology side, the survey side, to be able to come personally to that, uh, to that meeting. And so that's roughly about two hours of open time, and so there'll be, like I said, a session that's kind of explaining what it is, and then, um, you know, I, uh, along with hopefully a couple of you folks will be there to be able to help guide them around the room, and they'll be, as we get closer to that meeting on the twenty fourth, um, you know, we'll be providing instructions on, on how to assist in, in that meeting, but it's basically gonna be like, hey, you know, here's the board about transportation, or some, uh, problems about, you know, are you concerned about, uh, you know, length widths, are you concerned about bike trails? Are you concerned about public transportation? And, you know, providing information like that. And then we'll also have a map of the streets in Perkins to, you know, where do you think the most important issues are in the community and why? You know, is it because it's a traffic issue or, or road maintenance, or something along those lines? So that way they can provide their thoughts that way as well. And so, we will do this, I mean, type of communication, uh, of getting the word out, um, through various means, uh, and of course, the online, uh, you know, another video for that, and I'll show that as well.
Larry?
Yeah?
Who conducts the public workshop?
I do.
I guess.
Yeah.
Is it a public meeting for purposes of the Open Meetings Act?
Sorry?
Is it a public meeting for, like, is it a, is it an official meeting of the Planning Commission?
Yes, yeah, it is an official meeting, so yes.
So I, I think a Friday is historically not worked out well for meetings.
No.
Well, this, this is not gonna be a forum where anybody will have a microphone or anything like that, so, 'cause I know that that typically does not turn out, all these people just wanna get up and, and not really provide information, they just generally wanna use the soapbox moment. And so that's the reason why the workshop is set up to where those boards are up there, or, you know, I, you know, again, just explaining what, what's, that's, the different areas are within the room, about the boards and how it works, and for them to provide it that way.
I have reservations about doing it on a Friday.
Yeah, Friday's probably not gonna work, uh, especially here in Perkins. Where, uh, Perkins is a big sports, uh, town, and a lot of people go to basketball games on Fridays. So that takes out a lot of the public. Uh, and also, right before weekend, it's kind of hard to get people to come out. So, probably, uh, Thursday or even a Monday might.
What about February thirteenth, the regular meeting day of the Planning Commission?
We can do that, um, yeah, that would be fun. Oh, well, unfortunately it's not good for me. Uh, currently I have, uh, surgery scheduled on the thirteenth. What about the eighteenth, which is a Tuesday?
Basketball again.
What about Thursday the twentieth?
That would be better.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's put it into the twentieth then.
Uh, Bob, I noticed that you had each one of these broken out as an item on the agenda, and he's gone through them without the announcing them. So, do we need to vote on each one of these, or?
There, there's no vote except for the survey questions, this item, I think.
Uh, the survey questions and, uh...
Workshop.
Oh, workshop?
Date.
Yeah, okay.
So I think, yeah, we're gonna have to start following the agenda and let the chair, chairwoman run the meeting.
I didn't realize.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So it does ask for, uh, well, you can, Patty, I'll let you do your thing.
Okay. Okay, uh, Larry, we're gonna go back to item number four on the agenda, which is, uh, which is review of the survey questions. I don't think, do they have any question about the questions themselves?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we had more discussion on how to get it out to everybody than, uh, actually the questions. Okay. So, um, I guess we need to vote on whether we approve the questions as they go out on here, or?
I, I move we, uh, consider action item number four as regarding the survey questions, that we approve them.
Okay.
I agree with that.
We've got two seconds to join.
Patty?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Marla?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And Kenneth?
Yes.
Okay, now, item number five is, uh, the public workshop, workshop date, uh, for the plan. And we have kind of decided on the twentieth, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion on that? It's an action item, right?
Yeah.
I don't know that, once you make that motion, the agenda item's over.
I'm sorry?
Once you make that motion and take action, the agenda item is over, and the next agenda item is adjourned. So, I don't know if he's done with that item. We did number four, now we need to do number five. That's what I was talking about. Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we're on the.
Uh, Allison.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Larry.
I was just going to show you the, uh, for the public. Perkins is growing, and we need your input to help guide its future. Join us for the Perkins Progress Plan Public Workshop, an opportunity to share your ideas and shape the next chapter of the city. During this interactive session, we'll discuss key topics like housing, transportation, and public services. Whether you have ideas to share, questions to ask, or just want to listen, this workshop is your chance to make this heard. Together, we'll create one that balances growth, preserves the community spirit that makes Perkins special. That's, that's one of the days that we go home, so.
Okay. So, the, this public workshop, where is it going to take place? Is, is, since it looks like it's going to be our regular meeting for February, will it be here? Because it's not enough.
It's not going to be a regular meeting.
Special meeting.
Oh, it's going to be special?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Very special meeting.
Is it's going to be, is it's going to take place here or like the Vassar Building or something?
Probably should have it out at the, um.
Vassar Building.
Um, territorial plaza.
Yeah.
I don't know how many.
If it's open.
Is that what you have in mind, is having it in a larger space than what we have here?
Yeah, I was thinking where we had that joint city planning commission for the adjustment meeting that we had.
That's familiar.
Last August, I think that space would be perfect.
Yeah.
I will.
We'd have to make sure it's available.
I will check the calendar tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So, is that going to be an evening?
I'm sorry?
Is that also going to be an evening?
I think if you want to get.
Yeah, from six to eight, just so that we can ensure as many of the people are able to participate as possible.
And what time do you plan on this meeting? At six or seven?
Six, yeah.
Six?
And it's going to be two hours long?
That's what you said. Are you going to have, uh, visual aids of any kind for the public?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Does anybody else have any questions about the workshop?
Did you hear a motion about accepting these changes, which they change and everything?
So, I move we have the workshop on February twentieth at six to eight.
At the Vassar.
Vassar Building.
That's available.
We are making a movement to that, I sort of say if it's available.
Yeah, yeah, if it's available.
Okay, so anybody want to second?
Maybe we shouldn't designate a place right now, just, just a date and a time.
Okay.
So, no action due to that?
Is that what you want to make an action? Take out the.
Oh, they will, they are.
Yeah, we'll take out the place and just make that open and just date and time.
Just date and time, okay.
Yeah. I second.
Did you second?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Patty?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Marla?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Okay, Larry, is there anything else we need to take care of?
That's it, thank you so much. And then my apologies for the dead men, for the dead.
Well, now we know how to do it if you need to do this again.
Well, hopefully we'll have it better next time, so, 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 yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to adj- to adjourn?
Can you make a motion that we adjourn? Recording stopped.
A second.
Patty?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Marla?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And Kenneth?
Yes.
Okay, we got through that.
I knew what you were going for.
Yeah. Oh, my curse is over.
Oh.